Modification for the public session. Any modifications? Okay. So, I'd like to welcome all the guests and visitors today. Now we'll go in September first, twenty twenty work session minutes. If you would look over them. And if I can get a motion.
I move we approve September first, twenty twenty council work session minutes as written.
Aye.
And a roll call please, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Fons.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
We move on to the public hearings. The budget amendments for carry forward fund for the general fund FY twenty dash twenty-one. Any good motion? Open. I think you have to do a public hearing. Okay. Are there any discussions on that? I think there is. Just go over. Open the public hearing board. For the carry forward funds. No? We'll close it. And then. Move to the resolution. Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-nine budget amendment for the general fund FY twenty dash twenty-one. In public. We'll close that motion.
Actually nine B's to bring the question into forward. Approve of resolution twenty twenty.
We get a motion to.
Uh, to Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-nine amending the general fund budget for the town of Blasen for fiscal year beginning last Thursday, twenty twenty, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one to account for funds carried forward from the previous fiscal year. As written.
In a second.
Second.
And then a roll call please. So, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Fons.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, I did ask Rebecca to be with us tonight as your finance director in the event that you had any questions. On, this is the general fund carry forward. We will be bringing to you at your next meeting, uh, any carry forward items as it relates to the water and sewer funds. Uh, as well as the grant items, uh, that we need to appropriate. But I wanted Rebecca to also report to you tonight while she was here where we stand on the fund balance for the general fund. So Rebecca, what is yours?
Um, well, it'll be short and sweet. Um, the preliminary numbers, of course, they're not, they're not audited figures yet, but when I ran the numbers, uh, yesterday. Fund balance for the general fund is actually showing up forty-six thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. It's now at one million, ninety-two thousand, eight forty-three. So. Fun progress and the upward trend, which is good.
And that's through what date?
That was as of four, six thirty, twenty twenty.
And actually, the auditor, well, the consultants of the auditor is finished today, and so she'll be able to finalize that number. But I think we have done the best we can to scrub everything out for the carry forward that you just approved. Um, so that what is left is in fact what will go to that fund balance.
And a question, how does that relate to our target fund balance reserve? Do you want to follow up?
That will happen.
Yeah. Okay. Just, I mean, maybe at the next session and just if we can break down, I think it would benefit, I think all the council would appreciate. If we have a target, whether, if there's a target that's separate for, you know, just our regular and versus water and sewer and then together as well. And just so that we can compare those, um, for the purposes of our own sort of knowledge.
Sure.
Uh, 'cause I think that's a, a topic of something throughout amongst council. I think we'd like to, you know, if, if we're at target, you know, and if, and if there's any projections you can do on that, um, that'd be appreciated.
Most firms will tell you need to have at least ten percent. Um, and I haven't run this one, but I'm looking at the last several years, we were very close to that. I think the auditors that you have currently are suggesting fifteen.
Okay.
And so we're short.
No, that, that, but I, I was just, no, how, how we're calculating, what's that fif- ten or fifteen percent of?
But, um.
You know?
Yeah.
Are we including water and sewer in that? Are we not including, you know, how are we?
Each fund would have a separate one, but we'll get those exact figures to you. In fact, I wanted Rebecca to come tonight and report to you all verbally. That we finally did have a number and it was a positive number for fund balance, and she'll put that in writing to you so that you have it to refer to with her, but didn't scribble it down when she was rattling off. And as I said, um, at your next meeting, we'll have the carry forward, uh, which should be able to then tell us the fund balance on both water and sewer. And so that might be a good time to wrap all of that together, including what those goals should be for each fund. But in the case of water and sewer, you have some different requirements just because. They are accounts that are supposed to sustain, sustain themselves from the users, and so the coverage requirement that various bond agencies have is different for that than if you have a GO bond. Uh, where you just have to have a one-to-one coverage. You have to have greater coverage for those, so it's going to be slightly different. We'll, we'll bring all that back to you.
Thank you. Any other questions for? Let's move on to the presentations, um, the capital projects update. Mr. Bill, how'd it go?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, Ms. Prushan wanted me to go over a couple of projects we do, so. We'll try to do that as quick as we can. I'll try to be as simple as I can. I can not get too technical.
Um, and remember, he's an engineer.
If you pull up the first map I have copied, it says existing system. Want to give a little bit of history. Um, if you look at where it says need more pump station, that is actually located in the basement of the water filter plant. So water's pumped from there, up Randolph, fills the need more tank. It's pumped from Veterans Hill Pump Station up to fill the Veterans Hill tank. And then it back flows out of that tank and feeds those systems and lines that you see. The problem is that what, back in the fifties, sixties, seventies even, the thing was to add line, get more storage. We expected things to grow. Sometimes it didn't grow like we thought they were going to. And it turns out that we have much more storage than we need. One in history, in the nineties and two thousands, they started discovering that there's a thing called disinfection byproducts. And that comes where you use chlorine and then you keep it for a long time. And DBT, you'll hear it called halocetic acid, H A five and T T H M. And I know there's a lot of acronyms, but, uh, those are things you don't want to have in your water. So what happens is in this Brookmont loop. Where you see the red, that's, that's water that's actually over ten days old. Up to ten days old. So that's where we were failing our tests. And that's where we metered some water to the Pulaski County. And they actually put it up in another tank and then it's stored longer. So through testing, we were failing some disinfection byproducts tests there as well as the county were. And we were given a, um. A notice to comply and then we were given a consent order. We had a P E R done in January, well, the consent order happened with V D H in July of two, of twenty eighteen. We had a P E R done in January of twenty eighteen. And the first firm that did it looked at a few things to do at the plant. And to try to get the storage time down, but in looking at it, if you go to the second sheet, we realized that. If we were to put a new tank out of Loving Field complex. Then we can actually get rid of the Veterans Hill tank, which is in need of service. We can get rid of the Veterans Hill pump station. We can get rid of both need need more tanks, and they're very old. We will have to build a new pump station somewhere outside of the filter plant or close to it. But the Pleasant Hill pump station and the little hospital pump station, as well as a Pleasant Hill tank, it'll all be taken out, out of service. Your Pleasant Hill tank is in the worst tank that we have. So it seemed very efficient in trying to fix this issue if we could take some of this antiquated stuff off, build a new storage facility with a new pump station. And take that service area into modern day. So, um, we were awarded grant loan package from V D H for approximately one point six million. Um, twenty, approximately twenty percent of that being grant funds, about three hundred sixteen, seventeen thousand. The cost to change from the old P E R to this new one that we just discussed where we can take this stuff offline is going to be at about additional six hundred to nine hundred thousand. This new P E R was submitted to V D H. Um, gosh. I think it was like in June. We're still waiting approval of this, and we expect to have that here with, in the next month. An, an interesting thing about it is the, the new tank that we're going to propose at Loving Field will also be able to serve the P S A. And if that tank is made taller, given it more head pressure, then that tank, they could be utilize that to service more of their area and take a tank of theirs out of service. And we, we had a meeting with Mr. Linkus of the P S A, and I think they're willing to chip in that extra cost, which would be about a hundred thousand. To make that tank more usable for them.
We have, I just would add that we have also in submitting that latest P E R to the State Department of Health, asked them to consider providing that additional funding at the same terms at the original.
Yes.
Application. And. Have not gotten an official response back, but certainly the representative from, uh, the state seemed to think that was a reasonable, uh, request, assuming that they reviewed and approved the P E R. So.
Right.
That would be our source of funding. I've just gotten through mentioning how important funding is, and so that would be how we would build that up. And then, um, obviously as a grant loan package, we have to then also, um, make sure that we have. Put into the operating budget whatever the debt service requirement would be on the loan portion of that V D H one.
That's a lot of info. Lot of acronyms, questions?
Uh, on this one. Are, are these estimated water ages under the new system? So that's a little key. So, so basically they're still red even under the new system?
Um, no. They, they will, there, there will be some that will be in the red, yes.
Uh, even after the new system?
Yes, yes.
So will we not still have the same problem in those areas?
We will not, no. It's a much improved scenario. It's not going to take care of everything.
I just asked, will we find ourselves still getting the ladders from having tests done in those locations?
No, I don't, I don't believe we will. Our engineer has guaranteed us that we will not.
At the, at the water age, if those locations won't cause the same problem?
And there's, and this is one small part of the, well, it's a small part. This is a very large part of the disinfection byproducts fix. But there's other things that we're doing also. There are some changes we're making at the plant, operational wise, and how we operate the super pulsator, the primary clarifier. Um, so the difference in addition of chemicals, um, we're adding, we're going to start adding a different type of oxidant at the roll bar pump station. So a lot of those things will take effect and help the D B T. This just fix, this just helps the water age.
But Bill, isn't really the reason why we have the consent order, it's the combination of what. Time water was sitting in tanks, both in the town and in the county. Which is why we got wrapped into the consent order because it, between the two, it was a very long period of time, whereas I think, I'm not the engineer, I think in those other areas that show red. You don't have that extension because it's not also accompanying time in county tanks, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so Bill, what is, I'm just curious because I see, you know, between a yellow and a red scenario, you're really, you have two days effectively. So what is the optimal time? What is, or what is the maximum time that, that everyone?
You want it to be about three or four day range.
So that's the reason, because a large section that's being re, you know, the, the, the large portion of the effective section looks like it goes from red to, to green and yellow.
Yes.
And so what you're saying is the additional changes that you're making at the filter with the chemical mixtures and stuff should address some of that?
The D B T issue. This, this just reflects age. As you can see there, how remarkably improved. The age.
So it could still, okay. So the water can still be the same, it still could be, it'll still be seven to nine days old in that area, however, it's a different chemical mixture.
Yes, because that would.
So we're shaving off, we're shaving off a few days potentially.
Yes.
Of, of great sitting in the place. Are we comfortable at long term?
Yes, I think this would be, I think this is the best solution. It's, it is the best solution, not only for water age, but really gets rid of a lot of our stuff that you're going to have to do, or we're going to have to do a lot of maintenance do. And I could come back with a spreadsheet from the engineer. I don't want to pitch you all with a bunch of numbers, but if you look at your capital costs, you're going to have to outlay to fix this stuff here with our new system.
I know, I certainly see where it could be a benef, it could be a benefit from that.
Cause I, I. I, okay, sure.
That's certainly, well, here I was just curious if, if we were in fact comfortable with, I mean, a two day barge in. Ed, just kind of seems, seems kind of close, but I mean, I'm just, you guys, you guys know what you're doing. So I'm just, I was just curious.
What's the P R V?
P R V is a pressure reducing station. That's located on Vaxman Road. And what happens is there's such an elevation fall off. Low Vaxman and after Brookmont, the pressure would get too high. So that's why L O stations are.
So Bill, just so I know, 'cause I probably wasn't here when that last thing was done, so you're saying this is about of the, let's say, two point five to two point eight million, if I'm remembering the numbers right. Of, for the total cost of doing this proposed Loving Field tank project.
Right.
Twenty percent is granted. So that, so twenty for the total cost?
Yes.
Okay. Whatever that may be.
So, so we hope that this new amount that they were agreeing to do the same term or?
Same terms. And then the remaining eighty percent is debt that we pay back through user fees to V D H, or is it put out to a different, what, do we?
It stays with, with the V D H.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a V D H loan.
Okay.
So we pay it back to them over time.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
And we've gotten this before over the years.
Yep.
All right. Any questions on Brookmont? Disinfection byproducts? Okay. Count on the same.
Do I have a question on that?
Okay. Okay. All right. So let's talk about the plant itself and unrelated to D B T. We've got filter number four. So we've got three filters. Give you a little bit of exposure about the plant. We have a super pulsator, that's our pri- primary clarifier. That's where the water hits first. Then it goes into secondary filters. We have four of them inside the filter plant. Water flows in the top, grab it, goes down to the clear well, retrieve a little bit more, and we ship it out. Of the four filters, filter number four, the last one exploded about a year ago. And it, it, it was modified and the. Modifications did not really perform well, and that filter was a little bit different where that was a precast model that was set in there, and that basically diskeaved the whole thing out. You guys are only council, remember that. You know, played around with insurance for a while and did this and did that, and finally, I think the council said, you guys, you know, you need to get it fixed. So you did. Filter four is operated super, great water, super quality, running great. The issue is that the contractor, the bid was for two hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars. The budget amount that you amended in June was for two ninety. I don't know how that amount got done that way. There was no money included for design. There was no money included for the, the big fact we had to bring in to suck the media out. There was no, uh, money put in there for inspection. And we had to do about twenty-three hundred dollars of instrumentation to make the operator be able to read what that filter was, what it was doing. And then there was some bond counseling. So all that adds up to an additional hundred and seven thousand dollars. We're going to need to come up with to pay for that filter four. Over the other two ninety-one. Bad news I bring to you today is that filter number two is showing signs of failure. Just to suck that media out and take care of it, clean it out, suppress to see what is going on with it, is going to be seven thousand bucks. I've got a price from a contractor that did the filter number four. He will completely redo filter two in the same fashion that he did filter four, including sucking it out, the seven, seven thousand dollars. Redoing the whole filter for two hundred and eighty thousand. If people still honor that, he's probably working a cover spare.
Would that be the two hun- two eighty-four, two eighty-five plus another?
No.
I move for the rest, or?
Two eighty would include.
I know that we spoke when.
Should we redo filter two?
When four B went out, that they've been looking at doing them all, um, at some point over the future.
Yes, correct.
Darlene, would there be benefit to just go ahead and looking at doing them all, as you mentioned, that if you're going to borrow the?
Yeah, well, I think, I think what we ought to do is probably bring all of these water projects together at one time and see how to package it. It's obvious to me, um, and I think to Bill, uh, with a hundred plus thousand, if we're short on filter four, that we're going to need to find that money and find it quickly because we've got the bills. And so probably, and I don't have the final number on the carry forward, uh, but we'll finally suggest to you, you know, probably suggest to you that you just take that from fund balance. Get that hundred thousand out of the way, that project be finished because everything's really done with it. The two eighty, uh, or eighty-four, whatever the number is that Bill's talking about, um, is just one item. I think we need to look at, are there other capital things that we need to be doing right away and then package it if we want to? If we did go on this one, I would, uh, if you wanted to borrow money, I would do a short-term borrowing, um, for that small amount. But then if you've got multiple and we're into the millions of dollars of projects, uh, then I would suggest we package it and go out for just a water revenue bond. Uh, but a water revenue bond's going to require you to have the rate structure to support that, which is going to mean you're probably going to be increasing your water rate, which is why. We need to have somebody come in and really take a good look at what our rate structure is today and what it would have to be, uh, to deal with something that long term.
So what are the?
Right now, I guess we're going to, you know, at least for the next month, live long on filter two. Uh, but we do have a good price on it, less than what it cost us on the first one, but can you tell me that it's basically the same model?
Yes.
So, uh, that saves a lot of that other cost that we had with filter four, right?
Correct.
What are your thoughts or what are the conditions of one and three? Do we have a?
You know, one and three shows no physical signs of failure at this point. Filter two, I'm afraid does. I'm afraid that if we took that filter down, and I really don't want to waste seven thousand bucks to pull it down, and it would be another probably four to five thousand, put the media back.
Yeah.
You know, pretty new. That was a rebuild.
How old is it?
That filter, um, is probably only eight years old, about. But the problem is the inserts that were put in, they're, they're failing.
But to Mr. Fons' point, one and three aren't showing signs of failure now, however, two wasn't showing signs of failure, if I'm not mistaken, when we were talking about four, is that accurate?
Not this bad. No, you're, you're, you're correct. Since we have been doing the rehab on four, and it is probably because two is being worked harder because those three filters having more runtime to make up for four.
So I mean, we, we could feasibly then see, see issues with one and three in the near future. We don't know. I mean.
Don't know. I mean, it's a crapshoot.
How long should they last?
You know, the filters, you know, the, the, your new filter number four should last for thirty-four years.
And two only lasted eight?
Yes, that's because of the plastic inserts that were put in, and they, that is what was failing.
And that's not the kind of model we would.
We've been with a completely different type of filter.
But one and three have those same plastic inserts.
Yes, all three have plastic inserts.
How old are they?
Same age.
Ask a question. Be honest, it's going to be a long shot question, really, and I'm, and it's probably going to be an impossible answer. I'd asked Sean about it several years ago. And, and may not be able to do it any, what, what would it take in the near future down the road to get into the water resource authority? To quit making water herself? Because this is, I guess what I'm getting to is if you already spent almost a million some dollars on pumps, is this going to be something every cost, because our equipment's just so old? And what I'm getting to is, is water rates in town, our citizens can't stand much more. It's only two of me and my house, it's a hundred dollars a month.
Right.
Family of fours, two hundred.
I think first you'd have an authority you'd have to get into, so. And it'd be one form, or the P S A would have to take us. That's the only other water authority around us, so.
Let's do something. Something's got to be done because as I said, our, our citizens, including me, ain't going to take much more of this. And I, and I, I understand we got to pay the bill. That's, I said, I'm not arguing that. We got to do it. But it's coming to a point, you got a family of four, put two hundred dollars a month in water bill, we, we got to look at something else here. That, that's what it's going to, and it's, that's not staying.
Now, does that bill include the garbage fee too? Because we bill that into.
It may do. It may do. Yes, I'm sure it does.
And I do think that's an issue for you all, and maybe another day for another conversation, but because you all bill on behalf of the P S A. For garbage. Most people talk about that bill as the water bill. Doesn't matter what's on it. They call it the water bill. And while you get, I think it's five percent, um, back from the P S A for performing that service for them. You're carrying the burden of that additional amount being in your bill, and if we were suddenly to remove that and have the P S A bill it or a separate bill. People might see any increase differently. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I see exactly.
You know, that you have that as a part of it.
If I'm not mistaken, somebody corrected, Mr. Penn, it used to be like that. Did we used to have garbage bill every three months or two months or something like it's built separately? And, and it used to be like that. I don't, I don't remember when it got put together.
In some places, the community that I came from, they bill, the county billed you annually, um, at the time that your, um, real estate was due for garbage, because they did the garbage collection. And when it had been a city, it had been a part of the fee. So every community does it differently, but I just ask that question just so that as we look at our water and sewer rates in the future, we don't just look at the bill as being. What is a concern, what those actual rates, and the key to water and sewer rates is having. A base that you can expand that cost to, and with the population being what I will call fairly stagnant right now, you're not increasing the number of customers that you're spreading those costs to. So, you know, that's the challenge, is bringing more people into the area, uh, having more customers either because they're in the town and we supply the water, or they're customers in the county in the area that we supply town water to. You know, so that you get more that way. But I do think the whole water issue is something that we ought to spend one meeting just talking about, putting out a true, what I'll call true capital improvement program that says, these are all the things that we need in the next five to seven years to consider replacing, given age, maintenance problems, and then this is what's going to cost incrementally for each. given age, maintenance problems, and then this is what's gonna cost incrementally for each one of these. And then we're probably gonna decide we can't do them all, and we need to prioritize them, but at least you have the whole picture. And you're not doing it just piecemeal.
Just one other question regarding one and three.
Mm-hmm.
If, and, and maybe this is a bit of a pipe dream, but what, would there be any advantage from a cost perspective to do? To bunch those, to group those together? My concern is, you know, you've stated that we worked one, two, and three extra hard while we were rebuilding four. If we rebuild two, we're gonna do that to one and three yet again.
Right.
So I, I guess my question is, would there be any cost benefit, would there be any slight reduction in having the same contractor do all three?
We'll probably get some economy of scale if you can tell him you're gonna get the contractor to do three filters. Um, that would probably lower the price per filter, I'm sure. Um, I think that with, since we've got four filters up and going now, we're not gonna take as long as we did with filter four. So I think we can have all four of them running until we get all the equipment in, take it down, have a much less downtime than we have had over the past year. So I think that will take some of the pressure off. The other three would have to run. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And can four stand more? You know what I'm saying, like, can it stand more pressure than the other two, since it's new?
Yes.
Where you would push it more, push that one harder than the other two?
And when we redid four, we set up what is called an air shower, and that's a real good way to clean these filters. We haven't had that before. We don't have the compressor and the guts to make it work. But we've got that set up, so if we could do, in an ideal world, the other three filters and get this air shower compressor, then you would be set for many, many years to come.
Bill, Darlene said something about, just now about, you know, what's, you know, talking about a, a full-scale, you know, capital project. How confident do you feel like you could provide, like, just the list of all the capital projects that we would need to do for the town, um, in the next, you know, the, the top however many are the sort of critical or, or necessary needs? Or what is it, or if, if not, what would we all, or you need to do to make sure that we can create that list?
Um, it would take a little bit of time to make a good thorough list, like should be made.
Right.
To identify all your, all your capital needs. You, you know, this, we're talking about the filter plant, but you've got other needs out there in your system.
Right.
Some tanks that need to be painted.
Sure.
Some maintenance has to be done, it just hasn't been to be done. You've got some pump, pump stations that are antiquated. They need to be upgraded. Um, all that doesn't need to be done is urgently, I think, is filter number two.
Okay. But you feel like you have a good handle on what those projects are?
We can definitely come up with a very good ten-year list, I think.
If I'm not mistaken, did we not have, uh, outside company in the midst of one of the aspects of these projects come in and actually do a study on, I mean, I think I remember seeing it in front of us and discussing it, not-
For the plant?
That had the equipment, you know, and showed the age, and it actually showed priority on that list of what needed to be addressed, and how old it was, and how much it would cost to fix it?
For the water plant itself, that, that was done. And ironically, the week after that was done, it was given to you guys, the number one item, one that was altitude valve for the filter plant tank there itself, went out. And we had to replace the altitude valve. Yes, that, for all the equipment inside the plant was done, and that was part of getting this grant loan package. They required that.
I guess that, just in regards to the, the, you know, because all the conversations are tied to inevitably conversations of our rates, you know, and all of that, I know it's inevitably tied to those things. I think at least twice in the last couple of years, I think I've seen rate comparisons to other communities, and our water rates themselves are, are positively comparable in this, in what we've been shown. Again, how thorough that data was, I don't know. Uh, but the data that we were given shows our water rates, but our, our sewer rates are what show on the high side of, of, of the community. And I, I guess that's always in, in what I've heard, been associated to our Pepper's Ferry rates, you know, that run our sewer rates, uh, larger than in comparison to, you know, our, our communities, which are tied together in that same bill, which would, you know, would kinda say if you just took our water rates out of it, they, they, our water rates for what we're getting is pretty good. And our, our sewer rates are just, are just high. I don't know if that's, I mean, I think you've probably seen the same numbers I have.
Yes, and if you go online and look at the Draper Aiden study that they do annually for utility rates, they have done that for years. They do a very good job of pulling all the localities in, in Virginia and do an annual report of every inch of water and sewer rate.
And I will tell you that every small community thinks they have the highest water and sewer rates, uh, in the state, um, including the community I came from, I heard that all the time. And then when you look at that study, it shows you you're not, uh, in that high area, but it's all customer-based. You know, it's how many customers are served. But generally sewer rates tend to be higher because they have more owners' requirements on them. But we could do the same kind of capital list for you for sewer, as water, as well as water, public buildings. You know, you've talked about the water plant, but you've got the water and sewer laterals, the lines that are connecting and taking, taking that flow to whatever their sources are too. And unfortunately, things that people don't see, infrastructure often gets forgotten. It's the things that are very visible, you know, just like when you hear from a constituent, you know, that something's wrong. You know, you don't hear about everything that's going okay, it's the problems. But if the council has an appetite for, uh, us putting together that capital information sooner or later, we'll be happy to do that.
Would it be too much force to ask for it for the next meeting, just so we can see it? Can you do it by then, by October sixth?
I would say the next, I'd say your next work session, give us a line.
Work session, okay, so that's, uh, the twentieth?
Yeah, it's a big tall order.
I mean, that is the start.
We could get a start to it, yes.
You may only wanna see part of it for the time.
I think one of the misunderstandings that people have is if you, your water bill goes up, so does your sewer, sewer bill. It's, it's, it's calculating on, based on where it comes out of your faucet.
Yes.
Has to go somewhere to go, they charge it for sewer, either where, where it goes to sewer line. If, if you want to give rest, your sewer, sewer bill goes up. It's the way it works.
You also have a rate structure, in my opinion, that, um, probably needs to be looked at because, uh, I hope I'm saying this correctly, uh, use of one gallon to twenty thousand has the same rate per thousand. And the more you use after that, you get a break financially, in that the rate per thousand is, is less. A lot of communities have broken that one to twenty thousand tier down into smaller increments. And so that they have higher rates from a conservation standpoint, you know, that you want people to, um, think about how much water they use.
Yeah, I, I happen to notice on my bill that when my, my consumption goes up by like twenty percent, it adds like eight percent to my bill, which doesn't seem, you know, I mean, I know there's some fixed costs that go into it, but I would think that there would be, if I'm using that much more, I should probably be paying, I mean, there should be a greater increase in my, you know, just to encourage me to, because, you know, the less draw, the less wear, the less, you know, we worry about filters going out, so.
Some of it has to do with the industries that you have, that you serve, that the highest volume, you know, some of the way you attract industry to a community oftentimes is to have a break, you know, at the highest volumes. But it does seem to me that you have a pretty large gap before there's an increase per, per thousand gallon rate. But again, as I've said to you all, I think having someone come in, uh, and look at the kind of structure we have, you know, with our system, even as we're looking at what kind of needs we have to repair or replace parts of the system, would be a good activity for us to be undergoing in the next seventy months.
So, so that could potentially address Mr. Ratliff's concern, where you have one or two in a household that could effectively reduce their rate and, and push those to the, push the cost to the higher, higher users.
Hey, and you, for the, let's say, for example, a lot of communities, and this will be in that Draper Aiden study, in fact, we'll get you a hard copy of that, it's a very interesting study, um, and they do do it annually, I've used it for years. You might have one rate for people who use, let's say, one to five thousand gallons. And most two individual families would use five thousand or less. In fact, some might be hard pressed to use five thousand. But then you'd have another tier, let's say, from five to ten thousand. Not necessarily a whole lot of difference, but something that encourages people to look at how much water they are using. Um, and then maybe another, a bigger tier, let's say, from ten thousand to twenty thousand. And then when you get to the five hundred thousand gallons, or whatever that top rate is, obviously you're giving a benefit because you want to encourage the industry, uh, to use that. But there's a delicate balance there in terms of where you're putting the cost. And I just think that maybe that needs to be looked at at the same time. But I also think we need to remind ourselves about that garbage part of the bill, too, and remind our citizens when they complain about what they're paying, you know, to look at what you're paying for water and sewer versus that.
Sure, and it would, but it would be interesting, I agree with you, to, to, to look at that and at least understand if we're as optimal as we can be to the benefit of the citizens, um, that are paying the bill.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, any other questions on water? I guess before we leave that, if, um, you guys have interest in taking a tour of the filter plant, there's not a whole lot to see. You can see filter four, you can see filter two. And those guys work pretty hard, but they don't have a lot of contact with all the other employees, but they do. They are truly professionals. So I'll offer that to you. I'll shift the gears a little bit, and we'll stop at sewer. If you could go to your last map. It's just a very simple schematic of how our system operates. All of the town sewer flows by gravity to four A. And it only has four A name because it was contract four A when it was built. That's down the rural highway. It's a large pumps facility. It pumps to four B. That was contract four B when it was built. It's pumped from four B over through Wernow to Dublin. And then in Dublin, it flows by gravity all the way to the Pepper's Ferry plant, where the city of Rappford comes across the hill, and they all meet together at the regional facility. We do have one little uplift station, Kreitzer Pump Station, that's back behind Kreitzer School. And it simply pumps that black line and pumps over, and discharges right there in front of Food City, to the gravity line, and then it all comes to four A. So, um, so over years ago, the thought was, you know, why are we pumping all of the sewage from Kreitzer across the hill, flowing down by gravity through the system to four A, pumped it right back by our biggest user, which is James Harding? Is there some way that we could change the Kreitzer Pump Station, which is in dire need of repair, and get that into that force main somehow, and send that directly to four B, bypassing Pump Station four A? Four B's gonna get the same flow as it would. That coupled with the fact that we've got a new middle school, and that drainage basin for Kreitzer, you've got a large development, and that drainage basin that will come to Kreitzer. So that was the thought process. When it first started several years ago, we were looking at trying to put it into James Harding and take James Harding's flow. That was the original PER. I kept thinking about it, and I said, well, hey, let's try to do that at Kreitzer, get away, do away with the Kreitzer Pump Station, try to inject it there, take the new flow from the middle school and this new, new development, and try to put it in there. We've applied for a lot of money, we've, you've probably written, we've gotten awarded some money. We've gotten one point two-five million from EDA, seven hundred thousand from CBDG, and five hundred thousand from ARC. The new estimate to do this, for this latest PER, of going away with Kreitzer and injecting it into the force main, is two point eight million. So we're shy right now in funding of about four hundred thousand dollars. We're that close to having the funding in place to do this. Um, we're hoping that maybe we can cut loose of some of this money once this addendum to the PER gets approved, and maybe get some design work done. And that way, I think that will open up some other DEQ money. And pick up some extra. I think that, um, you know, this is a real doable project. It, it will really, um, help the efficiency, and it will do it with a potential maintenance issue at Kreitzer. And it's not, it's a little bit more complex than what you, just look at it on this piece of paper. If four B pump station, which has a holding facility, goes down, all my holding capacity is at four A, so I've got to have someplace to hold it there at Kreitzer, so that's gonna be building a main gallon tank. So I gotta have somewhere to hold it.
But, Bill, would that help with the sulfate disaster?
It might. Now, you've heard about the sulfate studies. That is completely separate than this project. It's connected though. Um, it, it, it is gonna change the way the sulfate's developed. Because you're not putting it in that force main at Kreitzer. So it's not coming out in front of Food City. We're not gonna have to add dioxide there, or peroxide. You're not gonna put that in the force main from four A, or cut that force main down in half. You know, so one of the things that we need to look at is what is that gonna do at four B and Dublin? But there are ways to take care of that. So that is part of the sulfate study, which is funded by the county EDA, and that's currently ongoing with another consultant. Um, that's one of the things that they will have to look at and see what will, what will change.
But it doesn't solve the sulfate.
Doesn't solve it.
Yeah, so I think we still have, yeah. And this one is called, for the purposes of people referring to it in the media, you know, the James Hardy Project, even though, um, it serves significantly more than James Hardy, and will benefit the system, um, as a system improvement that will help them, but will help the system as well. The original PER, um, had anticipated, uh, an EDA grant of about a million and a half, and we ended up with a million and a quarter. Um, and anticipated the seven hundred thousand, uh, from DHCD that Bill mentioned, and the five hundred thousand from ARC, and your, uh, town manager had, um, anticipated the balance, uh, that was needed to be coming from a DEQ grant loan. Uh, that was not pursued at that time. I've had Bill, uh, talk with an individual who has a, a great working relationship with DEQ, and that's possibly where we'll get the difference, although we have some other ideas as well. But we need to start that actual design, uh, in order to even go after the DEQ money. So the sooner we can appropriate that money, which we'll do, um, at your first meeting in October, then we can go ahead and, uh, with the approval of this, uh, latest PER, we can move forward with design and see what our true costs are gonna be.
Okay. Bill, last one, just to clarify, because you said a lot of stuff, and I think they all got it, but just for my own benefit, just to make sure I understand it correctly. So right now, everything flows to four A, everything that doesn't flow to four A, including James Hardy and some other place, and some, and the new development from the middle school flows to the Kreitzer Pump Station? Is that right?
Everything goes to four A.
Right.
Hardy, um, the new middle school, the new development, and that, kinda that neighborhood in Wernow?
Right.
Goes through Kreitzer, over the hill to back to four A.
Okay.
So what we wanna do is put that injection point at Kreitzer Pump Station. There, the force main is on that side of the railroad track.
Right, okay.
So that, that's the ideal place.
So you, you just basically, instead of pumping it over the hill and down to four A, you just-
And I'm, I'm gonna inject it in, in the, I'm gonna overcome the head of that force main and inject it right into it.
Okay, that's what I, I, I just wanna make sure I understood all, because there's a lot of moving parts that I wanna make sure I understood.
We just talked about filter four, now we got four A, four B, and it's for- It's very confusing.
It is, and I appreciate you fair enough.
I just, I just have two quick questions. One, I think, yeah, you know, sometimes people talk about the sewer smell, the huge smell. Eliminating the gravity feed will eliminate a lot of potential smell too. Because that's, a lot of smell comes from a gravity fed line, right?
Yes, yes. What, what the smell comes from, Brooks, is when you take that sulfur laden sewage and it goes anaerobic in the force main. You cut the air off. And then you pump it in the force main and then it breaks out. That's where you get the smell. That's why you would get that smell in front of Food City.
And, and the gravity, because of gravity.
Yes.
Gravity line.
Because that's where.
So that'll help with the lock, which I think people, you know, certainly are going to appreciate. But on the conversation from Pepper's Ferry, so we get our rates, and I guess Lane probably answers this, but our rates are based off of how much volume we're sending to Pepper's Ferry. Right?
Kind of sort of, yeah, you're on a three year.
So when we increase how much is going through four B because of the development from the middle school and the housing development there, that's going to increase our volume of what we're sending. Is it going to look, is it going to increase town volume to Pepper's Ferry or is that get separated out to?
It'd be the same volume. Whatever we would send through four A is still going to be the same amount that goes through four B.
No, I'm saying after the development, after the development, after middle school goes in, after development goes in, we're going to increase our volume through four B to that goes to Pepper's Ferry.
Yes, you're going to increase your volume, it would be at this injection station.
So how does that get separate? How, how do we know, since that's, I guess, county sewer going, you know, through our lines to Pepper's Ferry? How, how does that get separated out to?
You're, you're short, because we've had discussions about this. I don't know of another place, Brooks, that we have a sewer only county account coming in to us. So we'll have to talk with the PSA and bill them for sewer on their water readings. I guess we need an appropriate way. You know, we, we sell water back and forth each other. We have an agreement, darling, we'd like to redo. But nowhere do we have an agreement out there for sewer.
This is the only place that county sewer is coming in at is after that development.
That's not coming off our water reading.
And with the middle school.
Right, so it would be simple, it would be simple to just do an agreement that we, you know, we take their PSA water reading.
But that hasn't been, but there is no agreement yet.
Not that I know of. I know there's for water. But not for sewer. But that should be a very simple.
Because we haven't had the need for it up until this point, I guess, is really the reason. But it's always come to light, you know, as we talked about and tried to look for, talking about.
There'll be sewer coming off the middle school pretty soon. If not already.
It will be. And, you know, Pepper's Ferry will have to do some different things too, because now we currently get billed off the totalizer at four A. And now I'm going to be taking a lot of sewage and I'm going to put it back to four B. So we'll have to, this pump facility will have to include some kind of totalizer that we have to read for Pepper's Ferry. That'll be added to our bill. But those are the modern details we can work out. And your Pepper's Ferry bill is kind of an interesting thing, it's set up on an average of a time period. So you can have a really wet year and for others set the average, you're going to carry that out until they and you get a wet year and two dry years, which are good. Pay for that. Anyway, that's a lot of info I have. Questions? There are any sewer pump stations, they're, they're kind of neat. Like a tour of those, just give me a shout. I'll give you a tour, explain to you. You can see it on the ground. I know Greg went, you're going to go. My first guy on the council. Just give me a shout. Any other questions about anything else?
Let me just bring up while Bill was here, because Mr. East asked a question in the last week or several about trees on Main Street. And I had just a week before his question. As Bill knows, done a walking tour of Main Street and created what I call the Bill List. And Carla List of things that needed to be worked upon. As part of our downtown grant for the downtown, but also just because we need to be taking better care of our part of the world. And one of the things that I pointed out at that time was that the trees on Main Street need to be trimmed. Because a number of them are taking over in a way that you can't see the facades or the businesses. Now, we also have businesses that don't have their street number on them, so that when you walk down, you don't know where a particular business is and if they don't have a sign. And so Carla's List includes sending letters out to all the businesses to have them adhere to the code as it relates to the size and placement and color of the numbers and that they need to be affixed on the properties. But we did decide that we would trim the trees and in fact, I think they may even start doing some of that today. But Mr. East was saying, you know, maybe we ought to talk about that, maybe the trees ought to be considered for removal. And I've been through that in another place. But in talking to Bill about that, we really think that the long-term solution is trim now and wait until, and you go with that. Wait till we get the VDOT MIM money and then tell them what we want to do.
Yeah, and there's a VDOT grant, grant that's hanging out there for pedestrian transportation. That was submitted, it's spurred up a few projects north and south. That would redo the curb and gutter sidewalk on the north side and, and the south side. Then we can come back with the street funds, pave the road. Have a brand new Main Street. We should put a lot of thought into that and, and if we can get those grants and, and plant some things and, and put in different plantings or whatever we want to do. I would come and I would do some taps off of your maintenance. Run through some fire protection system over. And then a lot of those older buildings, you could have some mixed use group, you could have some fire protection for a grill, a restaurant. And that's one thing that really inhibits those, those spaces now. So you could plan for that, make those connections and have them up above the sidewalks, you're not tearing the sidewalk in the, in the street up. Um, I, I would wait and do all that one time. New trees, sidewalk, curb and gutter, fire connections, utility connections. Uh, we might even look at putting utility, new utilities downstream.
So what's the, uh, so the grant's been applied for or the?
It's been applied for and we are in the preliminary running. And they had delayed for COVID, the vote of the Transportation Board until September. It was in the September, October, I'll have to look back. And they sent out a mass email to the people that, that were in the running still. They wanted to know if due to COVID, the Eurocouting would still be interested in this, which we sent one back and said, yes, we would. So that's kind of hanging out there too.
And you do one, one year and then you do one next, so that you wouldn't tear up the entire area. But in talking to Bill, I mean, I've already said to him, we need to do something about the water lines because of the sprinkler system issue and fire protection. And he said, well, why don't we just do it all at the same time? Because you're going to tear up the street and sidewalk anyway. You can take, uh, those tree beds out on a permanent basis, put whatever you want back in there, whether, whether that's bowls. Did you put other kinds of plants in or a different kind of tree? We'll be putting in curb gutter and sidewalk and paving anyway. And we originally thought we were going to get those, um, funds at the June meeting and that's when they, uh, sent out the COVID alert. Um, and we had expected those funds to be part of what we were doing with the downtown grant too, because we had said we were going to do streetscapes. But we explained all of that to DHCD, which is the organization that gave us the grant money and they're fine with that being delayed. They understand that we had planned to do that with the VDOT money. But I think in terms of the long-term decision about trees or no trees or what kind of trees, we ought to just wait. And we'll go ahead and trim the trees that are, um, there now, so that there is greater visibility. And pay attention to that in a very mindful way until such time as we tear the entire street up.
You know, and when we redo it, you could even do some more innovative things. You could make some, where the tree wells are or whatever plantings you have, a, a rain well. You heard about that when the Army Corps came and talked. Take care of a little bit of flooding, you know, not going to solve the flooding, but those little pieces will help. Get some places for that street water to go to.
That'd be a lot of opportunity at that point.
Yes.
Do we have a timeframe? I mean, do we, an estimate, I know it's nothing been said. Roughly, I mean.
You know, if they vote on it at the next meeting, it'll be next fiscal year, I'm sure.
They usually plan that two years out now, uh, with the transportation handsome money.
Yes.
So we may be a little bit off cycle just because of them not approving it and what would have been last fiscal year. So we may be in a new fiscal year, so it may push it back. But the entire plan was to do, to approve both, but know that one would come one year and one wouldn't.
Yeah, and I certainly think, and I certainly agree with that. I, I think trimming back makes a big difference. It's just kind of obscured, you know, Main Street, the, the most prestigious building on Main Street, of course, is the courthouse. And the entrance to that, it's pretty well obscured at this point.
They need to be trimmed.
Yeah.
We'll come back. At the end of the week or early next, we can see there's a significant difference.
You guys will get it done.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I guess we'll go into a table discussion, so Mr. Phil, you have any comments?
I'll only have anything.
Thank you. Mr. Phil?
I just had sentiment that Jamie kind of spoke on last, last change, I've gotten asked multiple times recently from different folks of how things are going in the town. And, you know, in, in light of them understanding that there's, you know, changes and stuff happening and and I, I've told everybody and just to, just to throw it out there, that it just appears that the level of action and attentiveness that, you know, is going into everything right now is just at such a high level. I just think it's something that, you know, all of us are clearly on this council seem to be proud of. Hopefully, hopefully others are starting to see that too. You know, you know, from a community standpoint, we certainly can see it here. And I think it's slowly bleeding out and, and I think people are becoming aware.
Well, I think I've said to the council on several occasions that in the short time that I've been associated with your organization, the employees have been fantastic. I mean, anything I have asked them to do, uh, they've been willing to do, have not been resistant at all, seem to be eager. And we're moving fast on some things and sometimes they, I think they think it's too fast. But I have a sense of urgency about everything that I do and I think they're beginning to, to see that. So thank you, because if you see people doing something good, well, please tell them that, because it means a lot to them. It just keeps them going that much faster.
Mr. East?
No, Mr. Phil.
Mr. Franklin?
I always do. Uh, first of all, thank Jordan for staying with us.
I was, that was going to be part of my comment.
Oh, okay, well, I, I struck it back, you take it. I'm very glad you stayed, but I'll let your manager say too, so, uh, very glad you stayed. Uh, second thing, you just touched on a while ago, employees, the flower beds look great. They're looking great. They're, they're getting back in shape, getting a lot, looks really good. I have one more thing, it's a wish list going forward in the near future. We, we're in springtime probably, we need to start really working on trees hanging in the road, do the bed. We got to get these things cut back. I noticed one at Sixth Street Park, a lot of the, the trees and stuff have now grown over into the sidewalks. If those people want to keep those things, you keep trimming back, we're, we're trimmed by it, but we, we just, I think, I think it makes the town look so much better when those banks are cut back, trees are not in the road.
And anytime you have a location, if you give me a specific or let Bill know, then we can go to that particular area. I know Mr. East sent me something the other day, asking about some lights that were out. And I said, well, we really need to know, this is a terrible thing to say, but you need to know the pole number, because those are managed by AEP. And we're happy to call those in and get after them, but we have to have identification. So if you can let us know, I've just written that one down. But anytime you see a particular area, call it in and then we'll take care of it.
Okay, appreciate, thank you.
I will be walking down, I will be walking down Main Street.
Okay, so I'm going to get my list.
You'll get your list. Get their phone number.
Uh, and I, and I thank us, Ed and, uh, for Miss Burke, uh, thank you for hanging with us too. So you're doing a great job, by the way. I, I really, really appreciate the work you're doing. That's all. Thank you.
Nothing else either.
Yeah, I just, uh, I wanted to say, I appreciate, I know I talked to Darlene about this, about this presentation that Bill did, uh, about, uh, projects. And I think I was really appreciative of the, the level of detail that was in on that. Because it's something I, I know I'm not as nearly as aware as probably the rest of you all and I appreciate getting all the updates on those things. And speaking of which, you know, um, you know, it, it's an issue I think we need to really be aware of at the council and, and make some plans for. I have, you know, I, before, years ago, I was, I noticed that there was a sinkhole in the alley behind my house. And the guys came out from Public Works in a day, which was great. You know, dug it up, fixed it, paved it back. It was, you know, I was so impressed that you could get that kind of level of quick response. That being said, they told me that the pipes under the alley, which carry our sewage and effluent and other stuff like that, are ceramic, because they're a hundred years old. And I know that that is, you know, just one of the charms of living in a, in a nice, small, old town. But it's also something that I think we need to be aware of, that, you know, as so much as, you know, I think these big projects are really important and they make big changes. I mean, for the day-to-day people, when your, when your water main goes out because, you know, it's cast iron and after, you know, ninety years, it's rusted out. And now you don't, you know, you can't take a shower before you got to go to work. That's, that's as big of an issue for anybody as a pump station that handles a million gallon of sewage. And I think we need to be kind of, you know, sort of cognizant as part of that is building in some more capital funds for those kinds of projects. And, and, and that's why I was asking Bill about that list, because, you know, I mean, and, and to Jamie's point, you know, we need to be able, if we're going to charge, you know, a hundred dollars a month, we need to be able to justify that cost, especially if we're going to be increasing those rates. Because I think we need to be able to go to our, to our constituents and say, yeah, maybe we're charging a lot, but here's all the things we're doing. You know, here's all the, you know, we are, we are modernizing our system. And that doesn't happen everywhere and, and that means that, you know, you don't have to worry about, you know, not having water for, you know, or having a boil advisor or something like that, or minimizing that at the very least. And, uh, I know that's, that's not a surprise to anybody who's been on council for more than a month or two, like me. But, uh, I think it's something that's worth mentioning, um, for those people who, uh, maybe are watching at home that, you know, I think that we're aware of it and that we're working on it and that we're going to take a real sharp look at it. So thank you all.
Mr. King, do you want to say something?
Well, it's your turn, Mr. Phil. Okay. Just a couple of things, uh, Mr. Franklin stole my thunder about Jordan. I had mentioned at your last meeting that he was leaving us and, um, the outpouring of support for what Jordan has done and what we now expect him to continue to do was overwhelming. And I did share, uh, with Jordan, you know, the various comments that people were providing to me. And it was not just from council people, but from what I call everyday people and staff who may not have had regular contact. So we all were very pleased, uh, when he decided to stay. And now I'm physically moving him upstairs, uh, to a more private area where he can work even harder on a number of things that we have, uh, going on. But we are all very, very pleased that he's staying. Secondly, I want to mention that we did announce at, at your last meeting that we were going to roll out the nonprofit organization grants. We have gotten probably a half a dozen of those, but I'm sure there are still needs out there. And we continue to get some small business grant applications. We did mail out checks to the first fifteen. And I'm sure that everybody is very happy with that. We're sorry we can't do more, but I think we're doing the best that we can. And we have now started on several of the larger projects that we're using the Cares money for. You may have noticed if you've driven around the back of the building that we have relocated the police vehicles and remove signs, so that we have the opportunity to redo the drive-through window, which a lot of people are really looking forward to. And we're getting ready to let the contract on that, so hopefully that work will have started by the time you have your next meeting. And we've started ordering some of the cleaning supplies, long-term cleaning supplies that are going to be. And we've started ordering some of the cleaning supplies, long-term cleaning supplies that are gonna be needed for the various facilities as well as vehicles. In order for us to do regular cleaning. We have gotten a request, official request from the Y M C A that I talked to you all about a couple of months ago. To do the childcare after school that we will be approving. And then we're still, that's for more than the five thousand dollars. And we're still waiting for additional information before we make a decision on the request that you had at your last meeting from the Means of Rights Group. I've insisted that they give us information about where they would be performing that service in the town before we put a package together and we'll send that to you all. But I did indicate to you that because of the questions the council had, we would wait on that. Did get an interesting announcement last week about a grant that I hadn't heard nothing about. But it, this is one of the better ones because it has absolutely no match. But it's also a grant that really is for the community as opposed to just the town. And many of the grants that we've talked about have to do with responsibilities that we have as a town, infrastructure, those kinds of things. This is a grant that actually was put together by several of our service organizations to include Lewis, Lewis Gill Hospital, the police, the Commonwealth Attorney, the Women's Resource Center. And the Department of Social Services. And it is a grant, a three-year grant totaling just under a half a million dollars. Four hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and five cents, hundred five cents. And it will fund a forensic nurse examiner and will address the issues of victims of domestic violence, dating, sexual assault, stalking, that kind of thing. So the grant had to be requested by a jurisdiction. The town of Palatki stepped forward to do that. And we will be administering the grant, but obviously, there are people who've been very involved in this that will, after we appropriate this money, because we'll do that next month as well. They will employ this forensic examiner and we'll get that program underway. So we're very pleased to say that the town has participated in making this happen. And no match. That was so exciting. I almost didn't know what to do when I looked at it. But that's where I went to the bottom line, wasn't a match. But that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to make some comments.
Well, I'd like to thank you for everything you've done. I'd like to thank Jordan also. And E, and our clerk, Mr. Questonberry, who does a lot behind the scenes that no one knows about. Thank you too. Just a reminder that our next meeting will be October sixth, twenty twenty. That's our normal council meeting. Our, we'll start with closed session at five thirty. Public session will be at seven here. And then October twentieth, the work session, closed session starts at five. The public session starts at six thirty. Also during council chambers. So I need a motion for council to go into recess from now until five P M Thursday, September twenty-second. Sorry, Tuesday at six o'clock. No, five thirty, five thirty. Okay, let's try to see it. I need a motion for council to go into recess from now until five thirty on Tuesday, September twenty-second of twenty twenty.
Same with?
Same.
And then can I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ragman?
Aye.
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 And I would just clarify, that's a closed session, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's a closed session. Council is hereby in recess until five thirty, Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty.